So I want to thank you for your support of the Mueller investigation. And I really have a lot of questions around that. So it's just so great that I can have the time to ask you right now. You know, I know that, so let me ask about the Mueller investigation right now. And maybe you can clarify some of my understanding. So if President Trump was to fire Jeff Sessions, then he could appoint a new Attorney General, and that Attorney General could dust and fire Mueller, Robert Mueller, is that true?
That is true. And you know, what I can say is that, you know, a new Attorney General would have to be confirmed by the Senate before he would have the power to do that. And I would imagine that whomever the President nominates to replace Sessions is going to be under great scrutiny during his confirmation hearings.
So do you believe that that would protect that investigation, Robert Mueller?
Well, it depends upon, you know, how the senators, particularly the Democratic senators on the Judiciary Committee, you know, ask the questions and whether they're able to obtain a commitment from the nominee not to fire Mr. Mueller. An executive branch confirmation is different than a judicial branch confirmation because I think it would be improper for a judicial nominee to say ahead of time how he would rule on a case if it came before the court.
So, but if it should occur, like a Saturday night massacre, like what happened under President Nixon, that President Trump just fires people until he gets the person who's willing to fire Robert Mueller, what would you do?
I'd have to look at the circumstances first. You know, if you look at the Richard Nixon impeachment, which is probably, you know, the case that is most similar to, you know, the hypothetical set of facts that you've outlined, Nixon was not impeached for anything that he did in the Saturday night massacre because he did have the constitutional authority to do that. You know, as would any President of the United States, whether it's President Trump or any President in the future. You know, executive branch employees serve at the pleasure of the President. And however, until they were actually confirmed, you know, by the Senate, they cannot act.
So, would you pass some legislation that would protect Robert Mueller from being fired?
The answer is no, because it would be unconstitutional. It would be unconstitutional because the Appointments Clause in the Constitution, you know, is pretty clear, you know, and the fact that executive branch employees who are not nominated for a fixed term, you know, which is the entire Cabinet and the Deputy Secretaries and things like that, serve at the pleasure of the President.
Well, I have two more questions. So if the Mueller investigation finds evidence that President Trump is guilty of obstruction of justice, perjury, colluding with the Russians, or money laundering, would you support impeachment? Would there be any circumstances that you would support impeachment?
That depends upon what evidence is presented during the impeachment inquiry before the House Judiciary Committee. One of, you know, I have acted as a manager or prosecutor in four Senate impeachment trials, which is more than anybody else in the history of the country. And what the House and the Senate do under the doctrine of separation of powers is they have to find their own facts and make a determination on whether those facts constituted an impeachable offense. If you look at the Constitution, treason and bribery, which are pretty straightforward, are impeachable, and then it says other high crimes and misdemeanors. And, you know, that is somewhat elastic, and it depends upon, you know, what a majority vote at the House of Representatives would be on any given day.
We, I'm sure you can understand my concern about that, having a President doing those things and having those consequences. But, so I'm concerned about Russian interference into our elections, and I understand that the Tea Party head of the National Security Agency said that Admiral Michael Rogers said that the White House has not asked the NSA to do anything to counter the Russian interference.
That's up to the White House. Admiral Rogers works for the President of the United States, and I believe he was originally appointed by President Obama.
So since this President has taken no steps to address this threat, and I see this threat as really a threat to our democracy and our elections, what could you do to protect the United States at this very frightening time?
The NSA has got all of the authority, you know, that it needs on this issue. I would point out that Article 1, Section 4 of the Constitution basically gives almost exclusive discretion on how to run elections to the states. And there is very little room for any type of federal legislation involved. And, you know, if you look at various types of broadening of the franchise during the history of our country, it required a constitutional amendment because doing it simply by a statute would not have been constitutional. And you look at issues like giving the vote to ex-slaves, women's suffrage, lowering the voting age to 18, giving, you know, the right to vote for President to residents of the District of Columbia, you know, all of that had to be done by a constitutional amendment. So the courts have been very, very leery of federal interference in how the states operate their elections, which means voter registration, primary elections, how you get on the ballot, how the ballot is set up, you know, and all of that stuff. So you have to recognize that the right of the federal government, including the Congress, is severely limited by the Constitution and what the federal government can do on the issue of elections. And now, since we've got a room full of people, let me move on to somebody else who's just come. So who would like to be next? Who wants to be next going, yes?
I'm just moving next. I don't know why you're... Go ahead. I'm just gene-typed. I want to thank you for your support on the Disability Act. But it was important for me to see that you were represented in people with disabilities so that I may speak up to that as bad as possible. By that, the Act that was put forward comes. So thank you for that.
You're welcome. Thank you. The bill is in the Senate now, and I express your opinion to our two senators. I know we weren't able to stop it in the House, but, you know, basically what it does is it makes it more difficult to file a complaint under the Americans with Disabilities Act. Okay, who's next?
Just could you let us know, like, what the contributions to your campaign are from the NRA, and if you intend to accept that in the Senate?
We have received money from the NRA, and we will continue to do that. You know, let me say that my votes in the Congress have not, you know, followed the NRA's recommendations. And, you know, I am the father of the instant check system, which was probably the most effective law that has ever been passed to stop people who should not get a firearm from obtaining them. You know, I am in favor of, you know, broadening the scope of the instant check system in two ways. One is, is that, you know, there are certain federal agencies, including the military, that are not required to put people who cannot obtain a firearm into the instant check system. The Fix NICS bill, which has been passed by the House, has already done that. The second thing is, is that we have to deal with people who have got mental problems before they commit some kind of a horrific act from identifying them and stopping them from getting a firearm. And, you know, the way the law is now is a person with mental issues cannot be involuntarily committed for any kind of assessment or treated unless they're a danger to themselves or a danger to others. And, you know, that means that there has to be one overt act before you can convince a judge to involuntarily commit them, you know, whether they, you know, try to harm themselves or whether they go off on a shooting spree. Now, Senator Rubio, I think, has a very good program, or proposal, where you put the due process first, which is not what the President said, you know, at his roundtable discussion a couple of days ago, where he said, "Just grab the firearms." You know, that's not the way we do things in America. You know, when you have a right taken away, you go to court first. So rather than having somebody to try to harm themselves or an overt act trying to harm somebody else, you know, there can be law enforcement or social services or mental health officials that can petition a court to put that person's name into the NICS system so if they go and attempt to buy a firearm, they will be prevented from doing so. And I think that that's probably the way to go about it because if you look at the kid that shot up the high school in Florida and those that have been involved in other mass shooting tragedies, you know, they all have exhibited mental health problems prior to the time the tragedy took place. You know, the other thing is, and after Las Vegas, you know, I joined a number of my bipartisan colleagues to send a letter to the Justice Department to ban bump stocks. And the Justice Department has finished their public comment period on it, and they are at the next step to having a, promulgating a regulation which they can enforce to prevent the sailor use of bump stocks. And that makes a legal semi-automatic weapon operate like an illegal fully automatic weapon. And fully automatic weapons or machine guns, if you will, you know, have been illegal to buy or possess without a very hard permit to get for about 80 years.
So how do you feel about banning those military-grade weapons?
Well, if it's an automatic weapon, meaning a machine gun, which is a military-grade weapon, they've been banned for 80 years, and that's been upheld by the Supreme Court as not violating the Second Amendment. In terms of semi-automatic weapons, where you need a separate pull of the trigger for each round of fire, I am not for banning them because in most states, including Wisconsin, you know, they are legal for hunting. And state DNRs around the country, including ours, you know, have said they're legal for hunting. And I don't think it is right for Congress to take away a firearm that is used for a perfectly legal purpose by someone who does not intend to and has no record of committing a crime. If one has been convicted of a felony, one has a mental incompetency adjudication by a court of jurisdiction, or one has been on the receiving end of a restraining order in a domestic violence case, their names are already in the NICS system, and if they try to buy any type of a firearm, they will be denied that. And if they do get their hands on a firearm through the black market or whatever, or something that's, that previously, you know, exists, you know, they can be, you know, indicted and prosecuted and convicted for that. Yes, sir?
Would you support legislation that allows for research in gun safety by, you know, be funded by the federal government?
Yeah, the question is who should do it, you know? And I don't like to have the Center for Disease Control to do it. You know, they've got enough to, you know, work on, on the prevention of how communicable diseases can be stopped. So, you know, it would require the proper agency. I don't think the CDC is the proper agency to do it. You know, there's a limited amount of money for everything, and, you know, everything else that, you know, is a disease, including non-communicable diseases like cancer, you know, they do the research on, as does the NIH. And, you know, it seems to me that health money should be, you know, spent, you know, not, you know, for firearms issues, but should be for what has generally been regarded as health issues. Yes?
A couple of things. First of all, thank you for answering letters. I truly appreciate that. You know, we send communications to you, you normally get back to us. And then the second thing that I thank you for is offering the Brady Bill. You know, we, I was in a different listening session, and thank you very much for doing that.
Well, I answered over 83,000 letters, either by snail mail or by electronic means. You know, with the Brady Bill, the NICS system was a part of the Brady Bill. And this happened in 1993. And, you know, the original Brady Bill was just a five-day waiting period, you know, between the time one ordered a firearm and one was able to pick it up. And we did not have any kind of a nationwide database on felony convictions and mental incompetency, you know, adjudications. You know, we did have a state database here in Wisconsin, but if somebody, you know, had a conviction or such an adjudication in Illinois, you know, our law enforcement wouldn't know about it. So, you know, I went and huffed and puffed at the Brady folks, and I said, "This is something that is going to be, you know, extremely vital." And we had the waiting period until the NICS system was up and running. And we spent a lot of federal money in getting states that did not have their criminal justice and mental incompetency adjudications in a computerized manner. Again, we were up to date, but in West Virginia, all of these records were on three-by-five cards in every court, county courthouse in the state, and we paid to put that stuff in there. So after about five years, the waiting period disappeared, you know, and we were able to have the NICS system, which uses the same kind of software that Visa uses to find out if your credit card's any good when you try to use it. And there was a story in the paper in DC earlier this week that said in the last few years, there were 4.7 million illegal gun sales stopped by the NICS system. And, you know, you know, I might not be the legitimate father of the NICS system, but if I'm not, I will plead guilty to paternity.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I have a couple of other questions. The United States will remain party to the Paris Climate Agreement until November 4th, 2020. Should the United States try to influence the climate talks based on the overwhelming scientific evidence that supports an anthropogenic cause of climate change?
Well, I think the President has made that decision, you know, already. And, you know, what I can say is, you know, I've been to a lot of these UN climate negotiations. This whole issue, whether it's Paris or Kyoto, which was his predecessor, had very little to do with climate and a lot to do with economics and politics. And I believe that President Trump is right in saying that we have to reduce, you know, our emissions by something like 28% from the baseline, while the Chinese can continue doing business as usual until the year 2030. So, you know, my point is, is if there have to be mandated reductions, it should be something that is uniform around the world because you can't contain a reduction within a country because, you know, there aren't walls or customs posts up in the atmosphere, you know, and you can't give countries like China and India essentially a get-out-of-jail-free card in the case of Paris for 15 years. The second thing is, is that there should be no undue burden, you know, on U.S. industry and U.S. jobs because our country has been made great by manufacturing. And if the cost of energy in the manufacturing process goes way up, then we outsource manufacturing jobs to China and India. And going along with all of this, you know, the, I believe that the way to reduce greenhouse gases is not by some kind of artificial formula, which may or may not be enforced by an international body by the UN, but through technology. And we have had a greater reduction in our emissions without cap and trade than Europe has, again, largely due to technology. But for technology to work and to be developed, everybody has got to agree not to pirate other people's technology. And the Chinese and the Indians, who are the two worst offenders in terms of emissions, are also the two worst offenders in pirating other people's technology. And let me give you a very concrete example. I was invited as the head of the global, or the ranking Republican on the Global Warming Committee in 2008 and 2009 to go to India and China with then-Speaker Pelosi. And she invited me, and I accepted her invitation. In China, we met with then-President Hu Jinying. And Pelosi and I have all kinds of differences on practically every issue under the sun, but on intellectual property piracy, we are like that on that. So the two of us brought up to President Hu, you know, whether he would back the intellectual property rights that inventors of new technology that were designed to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And he said, "Only if the inventor gives us a compulsory license," which means that they are licensed to produce in China with slave labor and no environmental regulations, the invention of an American, or for that matter, a European or a Japanese inventor, you know, intellectual property on this. So the inventor will never be able to recoup the cost of developing the invention, which in many cases is a significant amount of money. So I forget whether it was Speaker Pelosi or I that asked the President of China, "Well, what happens if you don't get a compulsory license?" And he bluntly told us, "Well, we'll pirate it anyhow." Now, you know, therein lies the problem. And when you're talking about Paris, they get a get-out-of-jail-free card, whereas we have been much more effective in reducing greenhouse gas emissions by developing our technology. And who's going to develop technology if the President of China at the time, you know, says they're going to pirate it?
Right. I understand that, and it makes perfect sense. And I, for one, and all four, see into it that they don't pirate our intellectual property. I mean, you know, kudos, but...
But who told us that they weren't going to do it unless they got the compulsory license?
Just yesterday, Mr. Trump put a tariff on steel and aluminum, and I don't want to go down that rabbit hole. But the fact of the matter is, we could protect our industries. And recently, I wrote you a letter about, I wrote you a letter, something about this, and you wrote back and you said, "Wisconsin has some of the highest electric rates in the country."
It does.
It does, absolutely. So I dove into that, and I found out that Wisconsin generates electricity by burning coal. By 52% of our, our production is through coal-generating plants, which we in Wisconsin, we import from basically Wyoming. So we're dumping millions of dollars into the Wyoming economy to generate electricity. Secondly, our electric generating facilities are 47 years old. They're ancient. We wouldn't drive cars that are 47 years old. So what I'm suggesting is, let's then use our brain power to move this whole renewable energy and green technology forward. Wisconsin is a manufacturing hub, or it used to be, and it's not, you know, we're going down the tubes as far as, what, we're 49th in the country in, you know, business startups, and wages are depressed and that sort of thing. Why not support that kind of thing at the congressional level even more than we are?
There is a renewable energy standard that was passed at the congressional level, and the State Public Service Commission has, you know, imposed a renewable energy standard on electric generating utilities, you know, where you're not dealing with interstate generation but intrastate generation. And Congress cannot regulate intrastate commerce, only interstate commerce. So, you know, those regulations are on the books. You know, however, I think practically everybody admits that you can't run an $18 trillion economy exclusively on windmills and solar and stuff like that. So, you know, I think the renewable energy standard is something like 20% is got to be renewables, which is one of the reasons why we see wind farms in places like south of Fond du Lac and the like.
Well, in Iowa, and North Dakota and South Dakota, not here. I mean, that's the, you know, that's what's really shameful. And I realize that you're in Congress, and, you know, Representative Clayfish isn't sitting here with you.
I believe they're in session today, so...
Well, all right. But the fact of the matter is, our infrastructure is ancient in Wisconsin, and it's not getting any better.
Well, you know, what I can say is, is any time there has been an electric utility in this state, you know, whether it's We Energies, you know, that provide most of our energy in the southern part of the state or other electric companies, the local opposition, you know, has, you know, the roar of opposition has been deafening on that, whether it's coal or natural gas or nuclear. And, you know, I am an all-of-the-above guy, but, you know, if not in my backyard, you know, ends up, you know, being from coast to coast or from the Mississippi to Lake Michigan in our state, you know, we're not going to be able to update the electric generating capacity that we have. You know, I agree with you. You know, one of the reasons, you know, why our rates are so high, and they did not used to be that way, was because of, you know, the ancient plants, you know, have more maintenance costs, and they've got to be, you got to spend money to upgrade them so that they'll keep on generating electricity. You know, and at the same time, you know, the two things that people look at, you know, in terms of plant expansions, are taxes and the cost of power. And, you know, we're a little bit better on the tax issue, not much, but a little bit better. But the cost of power has been going the wrong way, you know, and that's why we don't have the manufacturing startups that we really need.
Well, hang on, hang on a second. The cost of power, if we burn coal, the cost of coal generation is through the roof. It is the highest, and what we need to do is take a look more at, let's transition that away from coal into natural gas so then in 15 or 20 years, we can do more and more renewables.
You know, hey, I'm all for that, but, you know, one of the, the newest natural gas plants, which is about 25 years old, around here is in Germantown, which is in this congressional district, and was in the state Senate district that I represented before my election to Congress. And all hell broke loose when they tried to build that. They finally got the permitting after a lengthy court battle, you know, and then there was a proposal to bring a pipeline, you know, basically in to provide the gas to be able to generate electricity. And that took three or four years because the people through whose land the pipeline was going to go, you know, were squawking like heck.
Right. Well, a couple of things. I mean, we could move that, we could move that. That was 25 years ago, correct? Well, 25 years, it's 2018, and I think maybe the mindset of people may be a little different today than they were then. And I'd also like to say, three years ago, the Public Service Commission increased all of our fees, tripled them. So if you have a meter on your house, the fees trickled three years ago. So the Public Service Commission, you're talking about fees and taxes, well, we're all paying more.
Yeah, well, just look at your electric bill. I did last week.
Well, a couple more things. The Environmental Protection Agency is slated for a 31% reduction, and the Department of Agriculture, a 21% reduction under President Trump's budget. This will reduce our ability to, their ability to oversee violations of regulations to protect our lands, water, and air. Regulations are our protections. How far is too far, and in your estimation, what must be protected? Will you vote to increase the funding of these agencies? Will you vote to increase the funding of these agencies?
Well, the answer is no. I think that they were overfunded. The question is how big a cut they should have. And you've got to remember, there are two ways of defining a cut. One is the way that we learned in third grade, which is it's a cut if you're spending less next year than you did this year. The Washington way, which has given us almost a $21 trillion deficit, if we're spending X number of dollars this year, and somebody asks for X plus $50 next year, and you cut it back to X plus 20, that's a 30, 30 tie, or 30 cut on that. And that's not the way, you know, we should be doing our math. We should be honest on that. The President submits a budget. You know, every president that I can remember since about 1996 submitted a budget that was declared dead on arrival in Congress, and the President's submission is dead on arrival. We did have an overall budget agreement that was passed about three weeks ago. I voted against it. We will have appropriations legislation, you know, that actually has the line-by-line appropriation presented probably the week of March 18th. And I, I will look at it, but I voted against the last outline, and I'm going to look at it and see if I'm going to, how I'm going to vote on this one. But it's got to be, you know, somewhat improved. But, you know, this is a work in progress. But, you know, the thing is, is that, you know, the budget books that the President sends over, you know, they're about as useless as last year's calendar.
Exactly. All right.
Okay, thank you. Who's next? I do have to be out of here at five minutes to 11:00 to get to Exonia, so, yeah.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to say, thank you for coming on this beautiful sunny day. It's very nice to be outside. But it has been sort of disconcerting to see what winter has been like here in Wisconsin. You know, in February, when you have nothing but rain, and then one week you have this beautiful snow, and then it turns into slush, and nobody can go snowmobiling, or they're not ice fishing, so the people are, I know that you're concerned about manufacturing in this district, and I grant you, this is a consideration that is of great value. But I think that everybody here now, which I was the county, is looking around and recognizing that global warming has changed our winters dramatically. And it isn't just about wildfires in the west and hurricanes in the south, but it's actually affecting us here, both financially and sort of culturally as well. So, and I want to thank you for acknowledging that global warming is real, and we have solutions to that. And so, I really do appreciate that. I agree with much of what Steve had brought up, but I did want to also specifically ask you, Representatives Dan Lupinski from, Democrat in Illinois, and John Fossil, Republican in New York, have introduced a bill to spur innovation in technology, which I know is what you support as our solution to global warming. And it would direct the Secretary of Energy to establish a program called Climate Solutions Challenges, which will organize prize competitions on five topics, including carbon capture, energy efficiency, energy storage, climate resiliency, and data analytics to better understand climate or weather, or to better inform a public office office. It seems like it would be something that you should be able to support, since it is within our country, it would spur innovation. To me, it seems like a very small step forward, but because they came on the White House and climate crisis, I am really encouraged that there are people in the House on both sides that are trying to really talk together and find some common principles and solutions.
Do we need, really need to pass a law and spend taxpayers' money to do that? There's been plenty of discussion on the whole issue of climate change, what to do about it. You know, I don't know why we ought to put more people on the federal payroll simply to continue these discussions. You know, in my opinion, you know, we need, first, vigorous enforcement of intellectual property rights, period. And I don't care, you know, who are the offenders on that. The government and the patent holder ought to go after them, and ought to go after them in a vigorous manner. And when you get the judgment, enforce that judgment, whether it's on a state-run enterprise in China or India, you know, or anybody else. You know, secondly, for as long as I've been in Congress, I have supported research by the Department of Energy and other agencies, you know, into various alternatives to fossil fuels. And, you know, I'm a believer in spending taxpayer money on basic research, which is in many cases too high risk for the private sector to prudently invest their money in. The applied research is usually the commercialization of successful basic research. And I think the private sector should be dealing with the applied research on that, because if they build a product and patent a product, you know, they, you know, ought to be able to make money off of it and be able to sell it around the world. And if it's a good product, people will buy it, because the market does work. Now, you know, that, you know, that would be, you know, the government involvement in this. You know, I believe that, you know, we should cut back on, you know, having duplicative and unnecessary efforts between the various departments of the federal government. And we kind of went too far on that during the previous administration. So, you had people on the federal payroll, essentially doing the same job in different departments, you know. This debt that we have is going to come back to bite us sometime, and I think it is incumbent upon Congress, you know, to weed out, you know, where there is waste, where you have people in different departments being paid to do the same job by the American taxpayers. I think that's the way to go about it, rather than passing this bill, you know, that is going to establish another department, you know, and another federal agency, and put people on the payroll to study the answer to the five things that you're talking about. And I think we've got plenty of data on the books, and there will be more data on the books, you know, of people, you know, who are funded by NGOs and, you know, other people, rather than simply having it, being funded by the federal government.
So, I can just ask then, this final question, actually, too. What legislation are you working on to make sure that our intellectual property is protected so that we can...
I'm on the Judiciary Committee. You know, I've been, you know, we, we are tweaking the patent law that was passed too prematurely. I think the bugs weren't taken out of that. We're working on an overall rewrite of the copyright law, which has not happened for 40 years on that. But, you know, in terms of enforcement, Congress doesn't enforce. We make laws, but the executive branch enforces them. And, you know, that means, you know, people going over to places like China, who are the biggest offenders, you know, on that, like Speaker Pelosi and I did, you know, and we went all the way to the top there to growl at them, and you heard what President Hu's response to us was, which is basically blowing us off.
So, I, I just have this one other thing. You don't sound very optimistic that that's actually going to work. So, my question is, do you think that the impacts of global warming on our climate are a problem that should be addressed now, or do you think that's a problem that you can just wait?
Well, we have two outstanding questions. The obvious one is how to effectively address it. You know, and that's open to debate. You know, I put my two cents worth in on that already. And it's through technology rather than some type of mathematical formula, you know, which more or less, you know, shifts where the emissions are around without reducing total emissions, you know. And both Paris and Kyoto basically said, "We would reduce ours, and China and India would increase theirs." Well, there's one atmosphere, you know, they're not 198 separate national atmospheres around the world. The second thing is, is how much human activity contributes to global warming. There is a scientific consensus that human activity does contribute to global warming, and I accept that. You know, however, there is no scientific consensus on how much it does. You know, I'm here to say it's not 0 percent or 100 percent, but I cannot say that there's a scientific consensus on what number in between, you know, is actually the case. And, you know, I think that a responsible legislator, whether it's at the national, state, or local level, has got to look at cost-benefit analyses, because if there's 100 percent benefit and 0 percent cost, that's a gimme. But on this issue, there is not. You know, it's, those numbers vary. So, you know, I, I have, I have to look at each one. I think that, you know, when you're looking at, you know, what needs to be done, having a strong intellectual property enforcement is about as close to 100 percent as you can get. And I'm going to ask for one, one more question, and then I've got to head off to Exonia. Yes, sir?
Okay. I'm a retired Yonkers Christ minister. Guess what I'm really troubled about is gun violence in schools. The 17 kids getting killed in Florida was just too many, and...
Four seventeen too many.
It will happen in your district at some point, if it has not already, of some shooting. Trump spoke out, I think from his heart, about doing something, and then met with the NRA, and it disappeared. There's so much political inertia from the NRA to do nothing.
The NRA is not a very inert organization. They're very active.
Well, they've stopped any movement of legislation. Even when Trump proposed something, they, it needed to be fixed, I agree. But my concern is something needs to be done. 38,000 deaths of Americans is too many. Most of them, two-thirds are suicides, and is not a part of this. I've been a part of, one of our members of our church in Nebraska was going to shoot up his school and was charged with attempted murder. He was mentally ill. So, I run into it, I took him to jail in Iowa. One of our people was on the edge of a small group who was going to shoot everybody in school, and the administration found out about it and did something. So, I have some experience with it. Bullying is one of the causes, which is a local issue, of kids who are different are bullied. Mental health, being helped with mental health issues is something that Congress, as well as the state, has some responsibility for, with the loss of coverage under Obamacare for mental health for many people. It's very hard to afford mental health care. Many rural parts of the state, there is no practitioner for mental health.
Can I, can I answer you, because I'm looking at the clock?
Well, and the other thing is the easy access to assault weapons, which I think just is crazy to add, but we need some kind of action, and we're likely to get little or nothing.
Well, I agree we need some kind of action. And if you heard, you know, the answer that I gave to the gun question earlier in this meeting, you know, I'm the author of the NICS system. We've passed fixed NICS, which doesn't go far enough. I support the Rubio proposal where we put the due process, you know, where, you know, if, you know, the FBI or local law enforcement or school officials or mental health officials, you know, figure that somebody has got, you know, a mental health problem that could morph its way into a violent streak where they'd shoot someplace up, they would be able to go to court and get an adjudication and get that person's name in particulars put into the NICS system. And the NICS system works, because it stopped 4.7 million illegal gun transactions in the last few years. You know, and I'm proud of the fact that, you know, I'm the father of NICS on that. And we've got to go a couple steps further to make NICS better and to make NICS work. And, you know, having the due process at the beginning, rather than what the President says, you know, in America, we don't seize people's property and then tell them to go to court to get it back. You know, we have the due process first, and we ought to keep it that way, because that's makes America different. You know, the other thing is, is that machine guns have been illegal for 80 years. I talked about semi-automatic weapons. You know, with a semi-automatic weapon, which, you know, has been utilized in some of these shootings, they're legal for hunting. And I don't think that somebody who will never use a gun for a criminal or an illegal purpose should have their gun taken away, you know, if they want to use that firearm for hunting. And state DNRs have said that this is a sporting-type instrument, you know, and they made that determination. You can't go out in the woods with a machine gun, you know, and let fly a deer that you see, you know, coming by, you know. But a semi-automatic weapon, where there's only one shot per pull of the trigger, is legal. I'm against making them into machine guns by banning bump stocks. I don't think you're going to see the NRA being really eager, you know, on all of these things. I support, you know, these types of changes. And I think these types of changes do not infringe upon the Second Amendment rights of anybody. And, you know, I'm willing to go and, you know, sign amicus curia briefs to defend that in court, as I believe I did when there was a challenge to the NICS system. So...
Let me just say that you can, at a gun show here locally, buy an AR-15, and you could buy it through the Internet. And I think the NICS system is good.
I'm for extending the NICS system to the Internet. You know, you can, you can get, you know, a lot of firearms through the Internet. I'm for, you know, expanding that through the Internet. But, you know, where I'm not for expanding that, if you have a family that has a keepsake rifle, you know, that has been passed down through generations, and the time comes when the father wants to give that to his son, you know, I don't think that, you know, the father, you know, ought to go run to a licensed federal firearms dealer to run his son's name through the NICS system. You know, I think that, you know, that kind of a gift, you know, should not be regulated by the federal government.
But you do have to do that for a car to transfer to a family member.
Well...
And we do practice that.
Yeah, but that, you know, that, you know, but for a car, you know, you know, I've transferred cars to family members, you know, and my sons got responsible enough for me to do that in, in good conscience. And the thing is, is that, you know, you have to re-register and retitle, you know, the car, and, you know, pay the registration fee so that you can get new license plate, you know, in the kid's name. Well, thank you for coming. Let me go off to Exonia, keep the cards and letters coming, and I'm glad you all came out today. So, thanks again.